Raymond, would you open us with a word of prayer?
By our head, please. Our gracious having the Father, Lord, we come to you tonight, Lord. First of all, we want to thank you for the many blessings you have bestowed upon us individually and as a city. Lord, if you would be with us tonight as we go through this meeting, Lord, lend us some wisdom, some guidance, that we may lean on you as we make these decisions. Lord, let all decisions we be making here tonight be made with a willing heart, with clear conscience for the good of this community and the community only. Lord, if you would forgive us and all of us, all our many sins, we say it in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Now, we'll take the oath of office of Judge Jackson. Would you like them down front?
I could. Three elected officials.
Just come over here. Probably we'd have to be on the microphone for it to be recorded. I will lead you in your sight, but if you raise your hand, then I'll state your own name. You won't state your own name. You'll state your name in the blank, and then we'll go forward, okay? Everybody with me?
Yes.
Please raise your right hand. In the name of thy authority of the State of Texas, aye, please state your name.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the Office of Councilman member. And Ms. Johnson, you'll say District Number Three. Mr. Hobson, you are District Number Four. And Mr. McMillan, District Number Five. So do solemnly swear or affirm, District Number Five, that I will faithfully execute the duties in the Office of
I will faithfully execute the duties in the Office of
Councilman District
Four.
of the City of Jasper of the State of Texas. Amen. And look to the best of my ability
And look to the best of my ability.
preserve, protect, and defend
Protect, protect, and defend.
the Constitution and laws
The Constitution and laws.
of the United States
Of the United States.
and of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God. Aye, please state your name.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
that I have not directly or indirectly
Have not directly or indirectly.
paid, offered, promised to pay
Paid, offered, promised to pay.
contributed or promised to contribute
Contributed or promised to contribute.
any money or thing of value
Any money or thing of value.
or promised any public office
Or promised any public office.
or employment
Or employment.
for the giving or withholding of a vote
For the giving or withholding of a vote.
at the election at which I was elected
At the election at which I was elected.
or as a reward
As a reward.
to secure my appointment or confirmation
To secure my appointment or confirmation.
whichever the case may be
Whichever the case may be.
so help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. Congratulations. For any pictures to be taken, we do have the spring certificate of elections. If you just hold that up, something like that. Mr. McMillan, if there's anyone here to take pictures, or perhaps from the news media, they'll be able to do that from here for a while. We all good, Karen?
We're good.
We got one more.
Thank you, Judge. All right. We have a proclamation. This month is Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month, and we have some visitors with us. Would y'all like to be recognized?
We're from the ministries. I'm with the Pink Hood Motorcycle Ministry.
Okay. And your name, Doris?
My name is Joe Belize. I'm the President, uh, State Rep.
Okay.
And he's the National President.
Well, glad to have you here with us tonight. And I've got a proclamation. And it just says, whereas today's society is pumping more citizens involved in motorcycling on the roads of our county, and whereas motorcyclists are roughly unprotected and much more likely to be injured or killed in a crash than other vehicle drivers, and whereas campaigns help inform riders and motorcyclists alike on motorcycle safety issues to reduce motorcycle-related risks, injuries, and most of all fatalities through a comprehensive approach to motorcycle safety. And whereas it is the responsibility of all who put themselves behind the wheel to become aware of motorcyclists, regarding them with the same respect as any other vehicle traveling the highways of this county, and safely share the road with motorcycles. And whereas urging all our community to become aware of the inherent danger involved in operating a motorcycle and give the operator the respect of the road they deserve. Now, therefore, the Mayor and City Council of Jasper County, Jasper, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2016 as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month. And I'd like to present that to y'all.
Can somebody please give my phone? We'll get the good-looking man in the center. How's that?
That's good. Ready? It's three of them.
Yeah, I started to say, let's say Jesus instead of God bless you.
Thank you, Mom.
God bless you, guys. Normally, a lot of people say, say Jesus, I said, say Jesus.
You have a chance to go to your department report. If you have any questions, now would be the time. Any questions on departmental reports? None?
Uh, yep.
Okay.
In my notebook, I got six or seven pages of the first page of the Jekyll information. So I'm thinking maybe everybody got six or seven pages of the same thing?
We did, yes.
Okay. I'd like to switch them out after we do.
Okay. All right. We're going to do a switch. We're gonna go with item number five, Consider Jasper City Cemetery. Oh, so we have no public comments here?
No, ma'am, but I mean, no, sir, we do need to elect a mayor pro tempore.
We're gonna do that after he finishes?
Okay.
The Jasper City Cemetery historically has been maintained by the City of Jasper for many, many, many years, starting back in 1919. And it went through a change of hands from 1919 to 1931, where the City Club was taking care of the cemetery. And in 1952, City Council voted to contribute $25 a month to the City Club to help upkeep it. And through the years, eventually, the Jasper City Cemetery Association collected a sizable sum of money to a point where in 1980, the Council voted to accept responsibility for the upkeep of another cemetery through the life and power program. And then in 2008, the City Council voted, again, at that point, to no longer maintain the cemetery and, uh, but were to hold funds that were in escrow that were from prior donations to the tune of about $44,000. Uh, the city was holding the money for the benefit of the Jasper City Cemetery Association. And then again, about 2000 and, just a second. I'm just kind of giving you the historical background of that. Uh, 2011, Jasper City, or the Jasper Cemetery Association came incorporated as a non-profit organization and asked at that time through a lawsuit that any money that the city held for the maintenance of the city cemetery be put into their, uh, their, their hands, which was, and that was done. 2011, there was a lawsuit that was filed that basically accomplished that objective whereby we took the money that we held for them and gave it to them. Now, the Jasper City, or the Jasper Cemetery Association, as it exists right now, is composed of many elderly members, many of which are lone, lone residents here. Gene Cannon is the treasurer. Bud Woodell, board member, Happy Walker, Mary Alice Deavy, Albert Snell, Billy Walker, and Ed Rodney Horusworthy. The Jasper Cemetery Association has approached the city and saying, we have dissolved our organization. We have given, they have given the money back into the hands of the city to manage. And they want to convey whatever interest of ownership in the city cemetery back to the city so the city can now maintain the existing old Jasper City Cemetery. Now, I will tell you that there are no available plots left at the city cemetery, but there are some plots that are unused through family plots that have been purchased many, many years ago. So in an effort to be able to get it into the city's name, I prepared a deed for the members of the association to sign, a copy of which I've given you there. And they have all signed it, and their signatures have been notarized, all the existing city association members, and conveying it back over to the city so that it can be in, uh, in the city's name, so therefore we can take and apply city personnel or trustees that we use, I believe, from the prison to go out and maintain it. Up to this point, the Sheriff's Department, or Mitchell Newman, and through his trustees have been maintaining it at their expense or at the association's expense. Now, we have money available. All I need from the council is a, a motion to accept the responsibility for the city and city cemetery so that we can maintain it and that places it.
I thought we accepted this about a year and a half ago.
We did. You, you approved it of petition of us, of giving the, nobody had a legal description that you had until we got the deed, Mrs. Murray.
Right. And we've had, uh, Laquan Hildebrandt, you'll notice it's about five acres, is what composes the city cemetery. He surveyed it all, and we have a property description that I've made before deed. And I prepared the deed to get every member of the board to sign it, although maybe all I needed was the president. I had all the board members sign it, so there would be no question about it. One other thing we can do is that we have, how much left in their escrow account?
We don't have the money, but it's called the First Banking Trust. I got one big guy cashiers check in the morning, but I had no idea how much it is.
There will be, I think, sufficient funds to be able to buy some zero-turn type equipment to maintain it.
If I remember correctly, it was about $24,000.
Right. I think it's
It was about that. It was five small CDs, about $3,000 left in their checking account. I don't know exactly. I just talked to the, it happens to me.
And we want to keep those funds available and earmarked for that restricted and limited purpose to maintain the, to maintain the city cemetery so that it doesn't become a burden of the taxpayers or the councils. We have the contract we have with the prison system to be able to provide the labor and stuff. The only other equipment that they have is two lawn mowers, and I think we, that's only Mitchell Newman's. But what I need from the council was kind of a resolution to, a motion to accept the deed that we have, and I will then go and record the deed in the courthouse tomorrow subject to the motion to accept.
Do I have a motion?
Open.
Right. Now, a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, go ahead, sign. Pass unanimously. Thank you, Mike. Now, back to item one, electing the mayor pro tempore.
I would nominate Ms. Hazel.
Okay. We have two nominations. All, all votes for Raymond Hobson, raise them hands.
Aye.
All for Hazel, raise your hand. That'd be three. Okay. Hazel, you are now Mayor Pro Tempore.
Thank you.
Okay. Item two, consider approval for a set of minutes from a regular meeting April 18th.
I move to approve.
Do I have a second? Any discussion, changes? All, all, passing those, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passed unanimously. Now, item three, consider request from Sue Singletary to Keep Jasper Beautiful, from Rubber Ducky Race Great American Trash Off held in Sandy Creek Park. Is there any? Nobody here to present that? You know anything about it? Did she just need approval to run that?
That's all she needs is approval, just going to vote from the council. I move to approve.
Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passed unanimously. Item number four, request, consider request from Interpol Police Chief Gerald Hall to consider approving updates to the police department procedure policy and, and item that we tabled on the, uh, impound yard. Go with the, uh, police procedure.
Okay. As you know, our former chief, McDonald, we did our policy, and I'm asking to go back to our former policy, uh, which is bound with the HR, uh, written back in 2002, doesn't need updating. The primary reason is the one McDonald put together has a lot of stuff in it that don't pertain to this and don't need to be in it. Like in the use of course, he has, uh, several sections of the penal code that don't need to be in the policy. There's, he has referencing communications to the MDTs. They don't even have MDTs. Down the road, sure, maybe it someday, but right now, we don't have the technology to do that.
What is that?
It's a mobile data terminal where you receive your dispatch through your computers and the cars. Um, you're looking at a, in order to do that, you're looking at a great expense, and you have to have some more infrastructure. And that'll come someday, but no time near in the future. It just, my dear, every policy he has in that book, uh, does not apply in some part to us. You can call it fluff, you can call it trying to be impressive, I don't know what the deal was, but there's a bunch of stuff in there that don't need to be in there. The whole book is, it's cut and dried, it's basic, and yes, it does need updating. I do want to address that, but it doesn't need all that other stuff. And we're supposed to normally update every forty-five years, that's the way I do, and that will be addressed, but I'd like to start with the base that we had to start with, that's already been through the trials and the fact, and build from there. Have any questions?
Do I have a motion to accept the police department policies and procedures named or as presumed?
I can't motion.
Seconds? I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Four to one.
We got to record a fact that I strongly oppose, ma'am.
Okay. We go to the next item, the impound yard.
Okay. I did some checking. Uh, that one, we had three or four wrecker services in town. I was assigned the duty to make sure they were following the rules, so I somewhat knew the rules that the state sets as far as fencing, service, lighting, things like that, even signage. They have a whole set of rules that you have to follow. And when I addressed that before about it, that's what I was referring to. I didn't know how much McDonald had addressed with y'all. Now, and I checked with Austin, a gentleman by the name of Todd Forrester, and found out that we, being a government entity, basically don't have to go by the rules. The only rules that apply to the City of Jasper is how much you can charge for daily storage. Everything else is up in the air for whatever y'all want. As far as fence, service, you don't have to have signage. You can, by the state, if you have a vehicle storage facility, then you have to have it available where someone can get their vehicle out within an hour's notice, twenty-four hours to that, seven days away, like Leon or someone. Well, that don't apply to us either. We don't have, we can send money through Friday, eight to five, uh, the hours that we want. Same with the service, same with, with the fencing, lighting, everything. Now, I put together, in your packet, uh, two different proposals. I put one together using chain link fence with the privacy slots, and then I put one together using R panel, which is completely, you can't see in at all. And then one has collegiate for surface, and the other one has what they call a wrap, which the city already owns, and it can be sold, and it wouldn't cost us anything, but damn. The, the price is about, between the two, is about $5,000. It runs anywhere from 24,000 to 29,000 for the startup. Now, as far as, on the positive side, once you get your startup, then you don't have any fees, you don't have any, uh, normally, the yard would have to get a license through the state every year, and the employees. We don't, none of that applies to us either. You don't have to pay any fees, you get any of those licenses. Like I said, the only thing that applies is how much we charge per day for storage. Now, vehicle under 25 foot, $20 a day. Over 25 foot, $35 a day. Then you have a fee for the wrecker, uh, whatever, you know. I talked to Leon, he said, in the city, you can do a flat rate of $75. I went out and talked, so we don't get stuck with a bunch of abandoned cars that people don't come get. I went and talked to the impound, the crush yard out there, and they said, depending on the vehicle, it'd run anywhere from $95 to $150 a year if you crush it. Now, the way it reads is, we can do whatever we want. We can, we can auction it off if it's worth auctioning, or we can crush it, or we can put it into city use until at which time we decide to crush it. There's not really a downside after the initial startup.
Were there, were there, excuse me, were there some numbers thrown out that this will generate at least about $25 a year?
I don't know. McDonald, I hadn't seen anything like that. It would depend on how many cars you brought in and how long they left them and such as that, it'd be hard to calculate.
I think it, that's been, you know, big enough.
I think that was in an news article with San Antonio.
$25 a year?
I, I don't remember them out, I just remember something come up.
There again, everything I thought was gonna be negative or was gonna go through, turns out that we don't have the necessary.
Because as municipality, we're exempt from a lot of regulations.
We're exempt, as government entity. So
In lieu of that, are you now enthusiastically supporting?
Yes. Uh, it would primarily be directed toward visual violators as far as no insurance or ground them without licensing. That's the primary target. It's not, as much as we just get them off the road, do they get legal? You have to send them a notice once you seize a car like that. You have to send them a notice if it's in state within five days. If it's out of state, then you have fourteen days. But there again, I put the numbers together, and it's got two options, uh, one with the chain link fence, one with the R panel. Personally, I, I think the R panels are better because you can't see in at all. If you ever seen one of those chain link fences, you can get to it right, you can see in there.
Gerald, is this being, is this being done as a convenience, or is it being looked at as a social revenue primarily?
I would say convenience.
Well, we, we have something in place now, don't we? Don't they go, don't they go to Leon?
They go to Leon.
Maybe y'all just call him, and he picks them up?
Right, right. And then whatever storage or whatever fees gives again.
But not for a lack of insurance.
Right.
And what's happening to these people in our city are getting hit with people no insurance, their car's wrecked, they don't have the money to fix it. They lose their job, they get back to work, they can't get back to school. We all know what that, what that means. This is trying to protect the people here and put a little teeth into it.
Yes.
People that have insurance, people, I haven't, people have been stopped, and they didn't have the insurance card, wouldn't we got a ticket for no insurance? What they had is, they had coverage, and they had a card with it, so they got a ticket anyway. So even if they got coverage, they don't have a card with them, they still gonna be
Now, if they got coverage, they're gonna bring in their coverage and show that they have insurance.
Yeah, but they, they want them to find their car.
Habitual.
He said habitual.
Whenever you run, and you know, if you run them, then it's gonna show a history of them not having insurance. That's, and that's when you, you don't, the first time you stop somebody, they don't have their card, or they, even if they don't have insurance, don't necessarily mean you seized their car. But if you run them, and they got five or six times, they've been stopped, no insurance, yeah, they, then there's their car. Start hoping. I had to pay insurance, all y'all had to pay insurance? Well, it's fair, it's fair. They run over you or your wife or some of your kids, and guess what? You're stuck. I mean, you can sell them, we'll get that done. As far as any type of recourse, you don't have it.
Gerald, since all that, the bank's changed. If you run a 28 on my vehicle, it comes back, my name, address, it tells you whether I'm currently out that vehicle insured or not. Is that correct?
Or, or it will say that you have to verify a medium, in which case you have to ask for their card. But yes, they do have a system now where you run them, and it'll say insurance confirmed or not confirmed, or verify a medium.
And that lady from up in the town in my house, she got, got a ticket for no insurance, it ran on her, she had, and she had to go to court. I told her, I said, best thing you can do is contact your insurance company. It had a percentage of less than 30% in effect at that time, which it was.
Right.
Only thing was, she didn't have a card with her. It says she didn't have a card, but she got a ticket for no insurance.
Well, it's always times that you have to have it in court, didn't you?
Then she had, she had to take off work to come down here and go to court, to get all that straightened out. So then they, in other words, at the same, on the same token, had, had, had been the pound's card in, she could've got her car on pounder, and she had insurance.
Not unless she was a witch. Was that the first time she Is that the first time she ever got a ticket for that?
I don't know.
I mean, that's the whole point.
Allison, was that the lady that you put me down?
Yeah.
You know, the insurance...
No, it was another lady.
The insurance, well...
It's a bluff. It's not saying right. She did later some...
Well, then, the...
The whole point is people doing it over and over and over, or they go get a temporary insurance card, then once it runs out, they don't pay no more, so it lapses. That's what we're trying to address. We don't, we're not trying to address people that pull out, they got my card, they got a new card, and we got it in, in the mail or on the desk. We're trying to address those people that know they're supposed to have insurance, and they do it over and over and over, and that shows up on your driving history.
And it's a state law.
Yes, it's a state law, you're supposed to have your, your ID.
Well, when you stop someone, you can run a history on their insurance, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, but if, if you have, if you've gotten tickets for no insurance, it'll show up on your driver's record to have an SR suspension.
So, the impound yard gives us a place to deal with that particular situation, in addition to the...
Now, one, one thing different, where like Leon's yard, if they come down there with proof that they own that car, they don't have to show him insurance. Us being law enforcement, our yard, yes, they have to bring us proof of insurance. We can actually hold it until we get that proof, where Leon can.
And you're in favor of the impound yard?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I like a motion if we accept their approval.
I'll second.
Any more discussion?
Yes. What can I... On the construction, is that y'all?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna recommend that we use pound sheets, metal pound sheets.
Air panel?
Air panel. And we use the recycled asphalt products, like, you know, to, you're done. There's no erosion, there's no wear, there's, you know, and our panel, it's not an eyesore over there behind the police department, it's completely covered.
Let me redo my motion to include that option.
Have you already have a book of regulations and rules that come with this?
Yes. We even have, we already do, whenever you seize a vehicle for incident of arrest, then we actually have an inventory form that officer pulls out, the wrecker driver signs this valuable, since things are in the car. We would also, with this yard, we would need to come up with a operating procedure for when he comes in, like, taking photos of it, damage listed, so they can't come in and say, "Oh, when that dent went in my car, when I, when y'all got it." Well, yes, ma'am, here it is right here on the pitch. That, that can just cover us. But yeah, I'll, I'll assist.
All right, Mitch May adjusted his, revised his motion.
Yeah, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Four to one.
Thank you.
Thank you. It is now 6:35, and we will go into executive session.